Coming in. So we will. We call please. Yes, sir. Erasmu Villarreal. Jorge Laminguez, present. Rafael Duñez Senior. Abraham Lujo, present. Jane Arváiz, present. Raul Valdez Junior. Loretta Valina, here. Daniela Sarrazas. Ana Villarreal.
Present.
For the record, we have four.
Yes, sir.
Um, we stand and for the pleasure of each of you, please, all of us.
A public hearing is still in place in the United States of America.
Thank you.
The public is such a thanks.
On the occasion.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, we have, um, Daniela Sada.
Yes, sir.
We're going to go to item number four and consider the approval of minutes. I'm going to give, uh, the commission, uh, two minutes to view it.
I move that they be approved.
Second. Motion second. All in favor? Standing by, saying aye.
Aye.
Do you have citizen comments? I believe we will have citizen comments, but it's going to be specific to the item. Do you want me to excuse? Have a motion to excuse the, uh, the commission that didn't show up. Three. Second.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Yes, have it. He has recommendation of ordinance. We're going to hold on the case. Amendment to an ordinance map of the city of Arizona, lot 105, block nine, Laurie Farm, unit number two, located at 140 Biscayne Loop, a modern single-family residential district to be for highway commercial district.
Applicant and owner is Mr. Pedro Valio. Property is described as lot 105, block nine, Laurie Farm, unit two, located at 140 Biscayne Loop. The zone change request is from an R1 single residential, single-family residential district to a B4 highway commercial district. The proposed use is pole rental. Peregized is an outdoor amusement service. Thirty-three letters were sent. Zero were received for and eleven were against.
Let the record that, uh, Mr. Chairman, that Abogar has, it's in, uh, in, in the, uh, in the, in the chair. So we're going to proceed with the meeting. Welcome, Mr. Guerra. You can proceed with the meeting, sir. Go ahead, finish this item and I'll take the next one.
Okay.
This is a general view. Area view. Street view. The zoning overview, as you can see, everything is residential and this property is currently right now zoned a residential as well. Future land use. Staff does not support the proposed zone change. The proposed zone change does not conform with the comprehensive plan's designation, designation for this area as low-density residential. The site does not meet the B4 location requirements that said type uses be located along principal arteries or expressways. Biscayne Loop is not identified on the long-range thoroughfare plan. The property does not meet the minimum lot size requirements of 10,000 square feet as identified in section 24.63 permitted land uses and section 24, 24-77.1 dimensional standards of the Land Development Code. The property is 6,600 square feet as identified in the Webb County appraisal district records. The proposed zone change will allow users incompatible with those currently existing in the surrounding areas. And the proposed motion.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Do we have any, anybody in favor? Anybody in favor? Anybody against? Okay, I'll go ahead and, uh, take one at a time and, uh, if you're in a group altogether, just so that, uh, you, the comment will be pretty much same, so. How many are from the area against it? Okay, we got, uh, we show seven. Go ahead, ma'am, for the record.
Hi, for the record, Ana Sofía Garcia, I'm with the city attorney's office on the interim city attorney. And, um, we as a city oppose this, um, change because this is for a public pool and, um, our public and semi-public pools need permits through the health department and this, um, public or semi-public pool would not qualify under that permit. These pools have been, residential pools that are open to the public have been inherently dangerous and this calls for deaths already. Therefore, um, we are not in favor of this.
The city attorney's office, you said?
Yes.
Okay. And the health department or just the city attorneys?
Health Department. Good evening, Richard Chamberlain for the record, health department director and so on.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No.
No? Anybody against it? Go ahead.
My name is Leslie Young. I'm a resident at 119 Biscayne Loop where I've been a homeowner since January 1988. Our little loop, our little block consists of family members and families that, neighbors that have become families. We've watched our children grow and be together for many, many years. I'm very relieved to hear all the information that you all have against this. We are a neighborhood. This is not a business. Our neighbors have been burdened by numerous functions held at this location with beer cans on the lawn, uh, over parking, blocking our driveways, and we are here in unison, everybody that said no, to say no, that this is not acceptable for our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for the lady? Anybody else wants to, to, uh, to comment against it? Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Salinas and I live at 140 Biscayne, which is right across the street from this property. And the main issue, we've been there, like Ms. Young said, we've been over, been there since, I've been there since 1987, which is 34 years in that area. Most of the neighbors there have been there for more than 30 years. We all know each other. We know our kids. We became grandparents. We've been retired. We're all doing everything at the same time. It's been, it's always been a quiet neighborhood, very good neighborhood, and I'm very much against this, uh, becoming a commercial property. Since I'm across the street, I get bombarded with all the cars in front of my lawn. Sometimes I have to pick up trash when they leave. I have all these people coming in that I don't know. And his residence only probably takes maybe three or four cars. So all the other ones go all around the loop. So that's a safety issue. If any emergency, uh, units need to go in, they cannot because it is blocked. Like, the character of our neighborhood will change because it's always been a quiet neighborhood and we need to preserve our privacy also. The value of our home will most probably depreciate due to this. Nobody wants to live in a, uh, commercial area. Also, our resident, when I signed the deed in 1987, it said that I'm going to buy a home in a residential area and not in a commercial area. There's been several occasions that there's police presence there because of, I don't know, people have been calling either noise, I don't know if it's noise or something, but then you see people leaving after, uh, coming in and out. Uh, if it becomes commercial, the time, we don't have any, uh, the residents, if it's, if it's commercial, we don't have any say-so or control over the ending time of any of these functions. The lighting there is only one light, so the lighting is not very good. There's no handicap parking, which residential does require that. And of course, the noise. And we also don't have any, we would not have any control of the occupancy. How many people will attend? We don't, we wouldn't have that. We don't have any, we wouldn't have any control over hours of operation also if it doesn't become, uh, commercial. And we don't know if there's consumption of liquor in these gatherings. So that's another thing. That's all.
Any questions for the lady?
He's a, he's a good neighbor. It's nothing personal.
Yeah.
But, uh, it does, you know, disrupt our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything that, that you want to add to that? I think they're pretty clear that, uh, that the group is opposing and the reasons the city of Laredo and the city of training, um, they got good cause to oppose it. So if there's anything else that we might add to those comments, then I will go ahead and, uh, and allow the comments. If not, then I would like to close the public hearing at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a comment.
Go ahead.
I know that, uh, this is controversial for, for some of you and it's upsetting, uh, but there is a process and when someone comes and makes an application, that process has to be followed and, and it has to come before the commission, but you need to trust that the commission is going to make the decision that is best for the community.
I, I would like to, um, make a motion to deny.
Second.
The...
All in favor, have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I, I have it. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, and allow Mr. Guerra, the chairman of the board, to continue with the, with the meeting. Thank you. All right. The next item we have is amendment of zoning map in the city of Laredo, lot 7, block 8, 37A. Rio subdivision located at 2402 Burnside Street from R3 to R2 residential. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes, oh, sorry, presentation.
Owner is Maria I. Miguela and applicant representative for Ms. Miguela is Mr. Ricardo Lopez. His property is described as lot 7, block 873A, Tía del Rio subdivision, located at 2402 Burnside Street. The zone change request is from R3 mixed residential district to R2 multifamily residential district. The proposed use is for condominiums. The applicant indicates that the condominium status is required in order to sell one of the units. Thirty-one letters were sent out and we did not receive anything for or against. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zoning map. This is currently an R3 and all surrounding areas is residential as well. Future land use map. F supports the proposed zone change. The proposed zone change conforms with the comprehensive plan, which identifies this area as a high-density residential. The property meets the dimensional requirements for R2 zone lots as required by Laredo Land Development Code, section 24.77 dimensional standards. This zone is not anticipated to adversely impact the condition in the surrounding properties or neighborhood. And the proposed motion.
Real quick, can staff go back to the picture, the property?
The street view?
Yes.
So this property is built out?
Yes, they just need to change the zone, um, for, I guess the applicant, um, wants to sell one of the units.
As a condo?
As a condo.
Are they duplex or?
Some duplex.
Some duplex.
Well, first you're going to do the zone change and then you're going to do the plan. Do you have a question for staff or for the applicant?
Uh, I guess staff, staff would be able to answer this. Is there a different driveway for each condo or is it a single driveway for both? Like, what is the parking arrangement in that property? I don't know, staff knows that.
They're on the sides.
They're on the other side.
They're on the sides.
They're on the left.
I call it left, right?
It's on the left there. There's one on the right and one on the left.
Good afternoon, my name is Ricardo Lopez and I would like to answer your question. Yes, there is a driveway on each side of the property and, uh, on unit two on the right side, on unit one on the left side.
Okay.
And there is more parking if, uh, we decided basically to use an RBE or something else. The only reason why we decided basically to sell these properties, uh, because my mother is right now 90 years old and we start basically selling all the properties. We want to keep one of the units, in order to keep one of the units, okay, we need this as a condominium, so. Zone.
Okay, very good. This is a public hearing. Thank you very much. Nobody else has any? Any questions? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against, against the zone change? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
I propose motion approved.
Motion, yeah. Second? And a second. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who gaze, motion carries. Next item, amendment of zoning ordinance in the city of Laredo, lot 103, block 273, Western Division, located at 1504 Santa Maria Avenue from B1 to a B4. Who will make the presentation, all of you? Amanda?
Owner is Mr. Edwin A. Garson. Mr. Orlando Garza is the applicant and representative for Mr. Edwin Garson. Property is described as lots 1 and 3, block 273, Western Division, located at 1504 Santa Maria. Zone change request is from B1 limited business district to B4 highway commercial district. The proposed use is from, is for swimming, swimming pool splash pad, outdoor amusement service. Thirty-six letters were sent out, zero for and three against. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zoning map and as we can see, or you can see, um, that one right now is currently zoned to B1 and all surrounding areas is residential. Future land use map. Staff does not support the proposed zone change. This site does not conform to a comprehensive plan, neighborhood mixed use designation, which does not include B4 designation. The property does not meet the Land Development Code, location requirement stipulating that B4 districts should be located along major arteries or freeways. Santa Maria is identified as a major collector. The proposed use is dissimilar to the primarily residential, like commercial uses in the area. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change, in favor of the zone change. Yes, sir.
Okay, so plan of this, it's, um, it's like a salon for, to have, just, for, yeah, it's a little bit, you know, 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 it's a little bit, you know,
¿En qué calles estás?
Estoy en Benavides y Santamaría, la otra no me recuerdo. ¿Dónde está la escuela?
García.
McDonald.
McDonald, McDonald's.
La otra calle es Davis.
Davis.
Es en la mera esquina. ¿Hay cualquier pregunta para el comité?
No, tengo una pregunta para el personal.
Gracias.
Gracias. Just a minute, I'll work with you in a few minutes. Real quick, ¿tiene que poner B4 allí?
Sí.
Tiene que poner B4 para que el parque pique. Okay, tengo otra pregunta para el personal. ¿Cuál sería el requisito de parking para este lugar en particular? Eso es 2 per.
Quiero que haga eso rápido. Pero, ya sabes, la dificultad de esto es el B4 y la intensidad del camino para un B4. Ya sabes, y se complica porque te pide poner un B4 en un vecindario. Ya sabes.
¿Podría ser un permiso especial usado en este contexto?
Es muy similar a lo que acabamos de rechazar en el otro. Soy muy familiar con este vecindario y yo vivía a un metro y medio de allí. Había una casa hermosa allí antes de que pusieran ese asombroso objeto que acabamos de ver. Y todavía sé a algunas familias que viven en ese área y son gente pobre, eso es probable por qué no están aquí esta noche para oponerse a ello. Pero ciertamente creo que es totalmente inapropiado sugerir que un B4 esté puesto allí.
¿Para poner cualquier cosa comercial tienen que hacer el B4?
No.
No, 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 no. Ahorita tienes una B. Sí se puede poner B4.
Ah, es B1.
El que no ve uno puede poner.
Es un uso más alto, eso es.
Un uso más alto.
Un uso.
Pregunta para el personal. ¿El personal revisa el diagrama de los diferentes usos que podrían permitirse? Tal vez en un B3 o sugiere el permiso de uso condicional.
¿Sugiere al apuntador?
Sí, como dándole una ruta diferente que no significa necesariamente cambiar el sonido, pero el cambio más intenso.
Correcto. Generalmente, mostraremos la lista, ya sabes, nuestra lista es bastante fácil de leer y podemos presentar eso a ellos. A veces la gente ve B1 y luego piensa, bueno, B3 es... 3 es más alto que 1, así que quiero ir con B3. Pero el motivo es el tipo de negocio en el área que quieres. Algunos son para cobertura regional, otros para cobertura vecindaria, y así es como lo hacemos. Pero sí les mostramos la escala, los diferentes negocios que puedes poner.
Sí.
Y está disponible en línea y todo.
¿Podemos volver al dibujo del edificio?
Sí.
No gas station. Lo sé. Él solo dijo que no había gas.
Ya, estaba preguntando.
Sí. Esos eran los garros de gas.
Sí.
Y sé que hay garros de gas debajo. Así que a menos que alguien los remueva, esos garros de gas probablemente estén registrados con TCEQ. Y en cualquier tipo de desarrollo que haga en ese lugar, va a tener que entrar allí y remover los garros de gas. Y luego va a tener que ver si el suelo está contaminado o no.
Exacto.
Y si el suelo está contaminado, va a tener que remover el suelo
Sí.
y hacer todo tipo de mitigación
Sí.
para hacer que ese properti可以用作游泳池. En caso de que no esté atento.
¿Puedes acercarte un poco? ¿Entiendo lo que acabas de decir?
Un poco.
Delgastan los puentes de gasolina. ¿Están ahí, están todavía? Ahí están todavía, son del 2008 y ya nos vinieron a checar, ya mejorizaron. Este queríamos empezar el negocio para que sobre la marcha del negocio se saquen los tanques. Como son dos lotes, esos están en Benavides y todo se haría realmente del otro lado de la propiedad. Eh, donde está la camioneta gris atrás. Y el tanque está acá en la puerta negra o los tanquillos que tenían ahí vendiendo algo. Acá está el tanque, es totalmente puesto en el otro lote y por eso yo quería como que ahorita empezarla a trabajar y luego sacar los tanques, definitivamente se van a sacar. Esa propiedad no la queremos ya ni de tienda ni de gasolinera. Entonces sí se van a sacar, ya nos checaron, son del 2008 y este y checaron que por lo pronto el tanque y la parte de afuera de ahí no hay nada. Pero habría que sacarlo, ¿verdad?
Okay, okay.
Sí, sí tengo conocimiento.
Okay.
Así que entiendo.
All right, este es un hearing, ¿quieres hacer un comentario?
Este es un comentario rápido. Uno de los mayores problemas, señor presidente, es que ir a un B4, estamos abriendo opciones por clarks, por maquinitas o items que están en contra de la área, de la comunidad. Yo sugeriría, como comentario, que el permiso especial de uso sea aplicado.
Vamos a pasar al hearing.
Vamos.
Okay, sir. Este es un hearing, ¿alguien más quiere hablar en favor, en favor de su propio cambio? En favor de su propio cambio. ¿Alguien que quiera hablar en contra de su propio cambio? En contra de su propio cambio. Sí, señor, ¿quieres hablar? Señor presidente. Vamos a pasar al podium.
Ese fue el último.
Lo siento, ¿cuál es? ¿En qué podium estás haciendo el comentario?
Sí, estoy en el podium de la zona.
¿En la zona?
Sí.
¿Ya hemos?
Sí, pero no tengo que venir.
No, señor, ya se ha hecho, el cambio de zona fue negado. Sí, señor. Ya ha sido discutido. Ya ha sido discutido, ya hemos pasado, lo siento, no puedo. All right, ¿alguien más quiere hablar en favor o en contra? En favor o en contra de su propio cambio. Si no, ¿cuál es la orden de la comisión?
¿Hacer una motion para negar este cambio?
Exacto. Tenemos una motion y tenemos una segunda en el denuncio.
Sí.
¿Todas en favor de la motion significada por el señor?
Aye, aye.
¿Todos en contra? Motion encarga. El siguiente artículo, amendando los ordenes de la ciudad ubicado en el bloque 7 Meltir, irrigación y agua de la compañía Platt ubicada en 1600 Island Street de la agente M1 Light Manufacturing, ¿all right?
El dueño, el dueño y el apuntador, el representante, es el alfredo Guerra. El properti se describe como el bloque 7, Laredo Land Irrigation and Water Company Plant ubicado en 1600 Island Street.
Lo siento.
El pedido de cambio de zona es de la agente agricultural de la agencia a la agente M1 Light Manufacturing District. El uso propuesto es industrial. El apuntador ha declarado que no identifica el uso propuesto. Nueve cartas fueron enviadas y no recibimos nada en favor o en contra. ¿Lokación de vista? ¿Área de vista? ¿Atrás de vista?
Oh, estables. Todos estables.
Sí.
El W H.
El W H, sí.
Okay.
Zoning map.
Esto.
Usualmente. El personal respeta el cambio propuesto. Aunque no está en conformidad con la designación del plan de la agricultura rural el área es predominantemente caracterizada por usos industriales light. El site cumple con las condiciones de la zonificación dimensional M1 según la Ley de Desarrollo de Laredo, sección 2477, estándares dimensionales. El site de M1 zoning hacia el sur es el centro de una gran área de zoning M1 hacia el sur del properti. Y la motion propuesta.
Okay, gracias mucho. Este es un hearing, ¿alguien que quiera hablar en favor de su propio cambio? En favor de su propio cambio. ¿Alguien que quiera hablar en contra de su propio cambio? En contra de su propio cambio. All right, ¿cuál es la orden de la comisión?
Motion para aprobar.
Motion, ¿tenemos una segunda?
Tengo.
Y una segunda de la comisión de Gámez. ¿Todos en favor de la motion?
Aye.
¿Todos en contra? Motion encarga. El siguiente artículo, amendando los ordenes de la ciudad ubicado en el bloque 1060 Eastern Division ubicado en 2905 Highway 83, de B3 a B4, de nivel comercial. ¿All right?
La compañía de desarrollo, LP, es dueña, Daniel Tijerina Jr., representante. El properti se describe como el bloque 1060 Eastern Division ubicado en 2905 Highway 83. El pedido de cambio de zona es de B3, Comunidad de Negocios de la Comunidad, a B4, District de la Vía Comercial. El uso del properti es comercial. Diecisiete cartas fueron enviadas y no recibimos nada en favor o en contra. ¿Lokación de vista? ¿Área de vista? ¿Atrás de vista? ¿Zoning map? ¿Usualmente? El personal respeta el cambio de zona propuesto, aunque el cambio propuesto no está en conformidad
Our site exceeds all of the dimensional standards set forth by a B4. By four. Now six, and most importantly. And I'd like to refer to staff on this a little bit. Can somebody please read the definition of the B4 zoning district for me, please? Mr. Navarro, you be so kind.
I just needed my glasses. The purpose of the B4 district, high commercial district, is to provide for those businesses and services serving a regional area which are to be located primarily along principal major arterial streets or the freeway, as classified in the transportation plan of the city of Laredo. It is intended for this zoning classification to exist primarily along principal arterial streets or the freeway to impose site development regulations to ensure adequate access of all uses within this classification.
Thank you, good morning. Appreciate that. So, he mentioned two critical things, right? So, the district is meant to allow for businesses and services serving a regional area to be located on a principal major arterial or freeway. Okay? As per the current adopted 2014 thoroughfare plan, which is in existence right now, okay? The section of Clark from the apartments to Loop 20 is considered a principal arterial. One. Two, more importantly. I called techs out today, and they also informed me that basically Clark from Arkansas to Loop 20 is now classified as state highway sport 400. So, if you go back to the definition of that zoning district, our site meets and exceeds all of the regulations. So, if, let's say this is, the zoning code is a little box, right? Our site fits perfectly within the rules and regulations of our zoning code. So, open any questions?
Any questions for the commission members?
Yo tengo una pregunta. ¿Qué vas a poner ahí? Tu cliente que tiene cuarenta estados y todo, me encantó el resumen. Pero, pero, ¿qué es lo que vas a poner ahí? ¿Qué es lo que pretenden poner ahí para que le ayude a la comunidad alrededor?
Okay, so. Y español está poco.
And you can say it in English?
Thank you, appreciate that. So, my client signed a nondisclosure with the tenant. They have a letter of intent in place, but they cannot disclose who the tenant is until the ink is dry on the contract. That's just the way some of these big retail developers do it.
Because what we see, what we see between the B1 and the B2 and the B4, the B4 is open for bars and maquinitas.
Everything.
And that's the main issue around, okay? So that's why I'm asking, right? What would be, what would you be putting there? Because that's the main issue that all of us want to know.
Of course. Well, it is a 9,000 square foot shell building, and again, they have not. They have not told me what it is, but they have told me what it's not going to be. It's definitely not going to be a bar. It's definitely not going to be a cantina. It's not going to be, it's not going to be a flea market. They're not going to have outdoor storage. I can tell you what it's, what it's not going to be, but I haven't been privy to information of what it's actually.
Because also to the back of it is the rec center.
Correct.
Y entonces ahí hay también muchos niños y muchas cosas, entonces ahí es en donde tienes que poner la balanza.
Correct. Now, the, I absolutely agree with you. The rec center is about 300 feet away, door to door, from our site, which is about a football field as well. So, typical, typical planning standards is anything within 100 to 150 feet may be a nuisance. So, anything beyond that is typically considered kosher.
But I, I also want to comment something.
Of course, please.
La entrada, la entrada de la calle
Okay.
es por Clark Crossing. Y la entrada de la calle del rec center, para el rec center donde están los niños, es por Clark Crossing. No importa que sea un football field o no, es la entrada, no tienes otra salida cerca por ahí, que ahí es donde también.
Well, we, we actually have on the, actually, what is it? North, east corner, we have a right in, right out. And so, we've looked.
Lot view?
We've looked at, yeah, it'd be, it'd be great if you guys could come up.
Ah, come.
It'd be awesome. We've looked at traffic patterns, and typically what most people do is they'll come in off of Clark.
¿Viste lo tienen?
Yes. So we do have two points of access, which is, which is of course very important.
Another question. There's a question for staff from the commission.
Sir, the property currently sits on arterial roadway. Is it the fact that it's close to the Hanes Center and the apartments, is, is that what it is, or what is the actual?
There's several. Well, the businesses that he talked about that are around the area, all those businesses are B3s. They're all B3s, so they didn't need a B4 to get those businesses there. They serviced the regional area, or the area in that, the area. The other is that the nearest B4 is about 1,000 feet away. So, you know, it's not, it's not near, just like you said, a football field away, but this is three football fields, you know, well over there. So, you know, to bring a B4 to this area, the intensity of what he can bring, plus what's allowed in that area becomes very difficult. My decision on this is more around the, the area that we have there. We have an investment of a children's, or a rec center, and we also have the apartment complex in the area. We haven't seen, I mean, I've seen success in that area with B3. And unless I knew what the.
The venue.
What it was going to be, then there'd be some consideration. But right now, all I have to go by is B4, and anything in a B4 is allowed. And that's the only thing we have to go by. So it's, that's my stance.
So, so when you say higher intensity, what uses specifically are you concerned about?
Everything that could be in a B4.
Give me, give me an example.
A cantina.
A cantina.
I think a discussion doesn't need to be too important.
Oh, okay, okay.
It is up here.
Okay, sorry about that.
And this is.
I agree with that, some of the uses that are allowed on B4, I'm not saying that that's what your client is intending to, to open, but besides the amusement redemption machine, there is scrap and waste recycle collection. There is heavy machinery on display. There is impound yard, and there's other things that, even if that's not the original intent, if your client leaves, that would be something that would have to be allowed by right. And it's like so close to the recreational center. So I, I do feel concerned with, with this use. Besides the point that it will really be spot zoning. You know, there's nothing around there that abuses property that's a B4, so it will be spot zoning. We're not justified to approve something that goes against a comprehensive plan. There's nothing around in terms of zoning or uses that are B4. And there's a lot of uses that would be negatively affect the property, in my opinion.
All right, then you have a question for Mr. Tijerina. I just got one question. You mentioned, you mentioned the traffic, there was four, four lanes divided, and it, how much did it, could it cover the, or handle the traffic you mentioned?
Approximately 1,800 vehicles per hour. And we are nowhere near that.
Is that, is that accurate?
As far as how many cars, the only thing I can agree with him is we're nowhere near that. I can agree with him on that.
And that came directly from Robert Benya. He handled, he is the traffic guy with the traffic department. That, that, those numbers are direct from.
Team, yeah, de ellos, ¿es español?
Poco, poco.
Trataba de hablarte espacio. Yo apoyo mucho los negocios nuevos, el desarrollo de la ciudad. Siento que todos tenemos la libertad y el derecho de poner el negocio que nosotros queramos, porque vivimos en un mercado capitalista, en un país capitalista. Y me cuesta mucho trabajo negarle ese derecho a la gente. Pero aquí en vecindario, estoy viendo que tienen un B3s. Y recorrí la calle hoy por la mañana y encontré un mid-market, encontré una tienda de pinturas, encontré una iglesia, una, algo, 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 árbol de vida se llama la iglesia, está en Meni Clark. Y más adelante Clark se abre a dos carriles. O levanta la zona o la perjudica. Si estás consciente de eso.
Sí.
Nosotros como sociedad tenemos que cuidar que no se salga del control, ¿me explico?
Sí, cómo no.
Tienes. Pinturas, tienes un mid-market más abajo, en nuestro infierno. Y yo, yo siento que, Mr. Tijerina, para nosotros creo que en este caso en especial sí es importante saber los usos que le vas a dar, ¿verdad? Sí, insisto, yo respeto tu libertad de negocio, vimos en un país, en el país capitalista mejor del mundo, y este, y yo veo que puedes o levantar la zona o bajarla. A mí me gustaría que la levantaras porque esta es una zona ya que se ve poco vieja.
Sí, cómo no.
Gracias, Mr. Tijerina.
No, 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 usted, el contrario.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Mr. Tijerina?
I want to address Mr. Tijerina, Mr. Chairman, in all fairness. It seems, Mr. Tijerina, that we're going to deny the motion. In all fairness, you want a table and read. And develop in that area.
Complementando, clarificando los usos, podría ser bueno y a corto plazo si lo pones en the table.
Exactly. Commissioner, thank you. I, I appreciate it. I will take you to the city council.
Okay. All right, thank you very much for your comments. This is a public hearing. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor? In favor. Anybody else who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change. All right, what are the wishes of the commission? Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to deny the zone change based on the, on the way it would affect the community, the way it is right now, and the fact that we only have B3 in that area, so we couldn't. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Those against?
We have one abstain.
The one abstain and the one against. All right, motion carries. The next item is the amendment of the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning 11.6 acres out of 53.4 acre trap located, uh, that conveyed to L91 BC Properties SEC, as described in that public record. And this property is located south of East Sanders Street and west of Bob Bullock Loop from B3 to R1A single-family reduced district. This is it. All right, amended?
Owner is L91 BC Properties LLC, Edward Bechelheimer is applicant, and consulting is Mr. Oscar Castillo, Oscar Castillo Peua Consulting. Property is described as 11.6 acres approximately located south of East Sanders Street and west of Bob Bullock Loop. The zone change request is from a B3 community business district to R1A single-family reduced area district to highway commercial district. Proposed use is commercial. The applicant has not identified a specific proposed use. Nine letters were sent out, and we have not received anything for or against. Location view. Area view. Street view. The zoning overview. And we do have business to the west, east, and north, as well as residential to the south. Future land use map. SPF supports the proposed zone change, even though the proposed zone change is not in conformance with the future land use map of the comprehensive plan designation of, for the area as a neighborhood mixed use. Excluding B4 zoning district, the property complies with the B4 zoning requirements as per Section 2477 dimensional standards. The proposed use is compatible with the surrounding commercial uses in the area. This zone change will not adversely impact the conditions in the surrounding properties or neighborhoods. This is a commercial area, the higher intensity uses of a B4 zone will not be out of place. There are B4 zoning designations immediately to the north. And this is the proposed motion.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change?
Oscar Castillo, with Peua Consulting, representing the owner. Hello, Mr. Chairman, commissioners and staff. We are for the, the zone change and, and here for, to answer any questions.
Any questions from the commission members from Mr. Castillo? No? Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor of the zone change? In favor. Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change. All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing and support staff recommendation for the zone change.
Second, we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Next item, the amendment of the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately 0.3 acres, 0.3 acres. And this is referred to as the Edward J. Dryden subdivision of property, and it is located, it's located at block 20, 70 Eastern Division, City of Laredo. And it's, it's as a 3301 Santa Clara Avenue from R1 to a B3.
Rosalina Baysteros is the owner. Property is described as 0.3 acres located at 3301 Santa Clara Street. The zone change request is from an R1 single-family residential to a B3 community business district. The proposed use is commercial ice water vending machine. Thirty-five letters were sent out. We have not received, did not receive anything for or against. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zoning, and right now it's currently an R1 residential, and all surrounding areas is as well, or most of it is residential as well. Future land use map. That does not support the proposed zone change. The proposed zone change is not in conformance with the future land use of the comprehensive plan's designation of this area is, as this area is low density residential. That does not include B3 district. The proposed commercial ice water vending machine is not, use is not compatible with the abiding residential uses in the area. The proposed commercial ice water vending machine will create dust, odor, and noise for the surrounding residents. And the proposed motion.
Amanda, can you go back to the aerial and the picture?
The street view?
The street view, yes.
Street view or the area? One before that.
No, the, ese.
What is the width of the street and the street right away in that location?
Go back a bit. I'm going to say it's 34 back to back.
No, it's more than, it goes all the way to the fence. Remember, we didn't pave those streets all the way.
It's 92, 90 by 130.
Probably 34 back to back.
It's in corner, no?
Is it on there?
92 by 130.
But there's a ship. If you remember, there's a ship.
Yeah, but it's.
Remember?
Yeah.
Yeah. The monuments were shifted in the south, so, yeah, I know what you're saying, okay?
Tijerina, measurement.
Okay, well, let me go ahead and continue with the public hearing then. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Rosalina Baysteros, and I am the owner of the property. And it's not, it's a corner lot, and it's, it's going to be, it's not going to be on Santa Clara. It's going to be on Ehido Street. It's a very busy street there. Oh, I'm sorry. And it's, it's a very busy street there, so it's, it's going to be on the very corner, if you can see. And I'm very sorry because I was not prepared for this. It was just at the last minute that they told me that we were going to, we had to present. We just want to invest a little bit of money, you know? It's, it's a vending machine. I don't know if you've seen them before, you know, it's the, the ice machine and the water machine, the vending machines. There's one on Meadow and Zapata Highway. And we haven't seen one in that area, so we would like to, like.
Do you have a picture of what it looks like?
I, I did put it on the, on the application.
Application?
Yes.
Do you guys have a picture of what it looks like? I have no clue what it looks like.
You, you would smell water and.
It's, it's, it's a vending machine. It's a water and ice vending machine. And the reason that we want, we want to do it, it's because due to COVID, my husband lost his job. He worked for 20 years for the oil field, so, you know, he had a little bit of money saved, so we wanted to invest.
So would that vending machine be located on the corner?
On the corner?
You would still use the house as a residential use?
Well, we're going to put a fence to isolate the house and isolate the vending machine. So there's not going to be. Which would be parking also.
Oh, it's going to be like a drive.
It's a drive-through. It is, all the vending machines that we've seen on Laredo, they're, they're multiple, they don't have no parking. It just go in and out.
Yeah, let me ask you something else. Why are you asking for a B3?
We don't know if we needed to, to do that or not.
I mean.
And I'm just asking for staff. I mean, isn't this something that they can want to be one? It's, it's, the use is not that intense, so. I'm just trying to figure out where the B3 came from.
We're new to this, so we don't know, so.
You're going to, you're going to have to do a setback on the machine in order to create the driveway.
Yeah.
Because I think part of what you see between the fence and the street actually is right away, and it, and it's not their property. And, and so then you're going to have to set it back a little bit further, and then cut, do a street cut to get into the property, do a driveway.
Two street cuts.
And, and these machines, you actually have to get off the car and put a bag in there, and then let the bag, and then leave, so it's not exactly a drive-through.
Not a drive-through, it's a U entrance.
It's a U entrance.
You go in, you park your vehicle, you get out, and don't get your bags or whatever, whichever it is, and then you drive out.
Yes, I understand. Yeah, but you, I mean, from what I see in the drawing, you don't, I mean, you only have parking here probably about two cars or three, the way you're proposing it.
Well, it's just a sketch and idea, because like I said, we can move it further down inside of the.
It's a huge lot, we can move it.
Yeah, that's no problem. We just need a permit first, so we can buy the machine.
And start.
Install it. And it's going, it's not going to be any powder or anything, because it's going to be cement.
Well, but you, you will need several things. Obviously, we need, you need curb cuts, you're going to need to pull in water. So that might have to be. How are you proposing to get water to the site?
They're going to put a, they're going to put a water meter and a pole in there to power up.
But we need to cut the street. He's going to have to get a backflow preventer, because he's using an ice machine.
Yeah.
And so it requires certain health requirements as well.
I guess the next question that we have is B1.
B1.
Is it, you know, being in the residential district, you know, once again, we get into the idea of changing the zone and then potentially doing something else in that zone. You know, it's, we're not sure, there's a lot of questions as far as how you can install this. There might be some property line issues, stuff like that. And then you're just going to a complete zone change would be very intense.
I think the highest, I mean, B3 is a very high intense use, and a conditional use permit is, it's, a conditional use permit is a permit, if it is approved, it is specifically just to do this.
Yes.
And there's conditions that go with it that need to be discussed with, with the planning staff in terms of what conditions have to go with that special use permit.
And that's what they had told me, Mr. Ino Tosa. I spoke to Mr. Ino Tosa, and he told me that there was a permit that they could give me. But then, I believe he got moved, or he got changed to another position or something, so I wasn't able to speak to him anymore. They directed me to Vanessa Guerra.
Yes.
And she was the one that told me that my, she sent me an email, and she said that I, that my application was incomplete. So we had, we had. We can wait, we're not in a hurry, we want to do things right, you know, we want to go to the, you know, we want to do things right. So then she said, you're, you're not supposed to come here, you're supposed to go first to the building department. And I said, okay. So she directed me to the building department. So we're almost done with the building department. We submitted an application as well. They asked me for the meter location and the water meter location and the water pool location. So we got everything, we submitted everything today. So, because we, we've been talking to the vice president, right, of the companies, because they're just going to, I mean, they're ready to come and install. We just need your approval.
I think the best thing that we can do right now, and it's up to you, I'm just going to make a suggestion, is, I think most of the commission here would be entitled a special use permit.
Okay.
However, like I said, staff normally has conditions they put on that.
Okay.
I would recommend, but it's your choice, that maybe we table the item so that you know what special. Whether with the staff, it comes back as a, you know, special use permit. You're totally knowledgeable as to what conditions they're going to put on that, and that way there's no surprises for you.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, thank you.
But it's just where it just makes, for business purposes, I think it would be easier for you all.
All right, thank you so much for the information, thank you. Yes.
So.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, on the permitted uses lunch, chart, it seems like they would need a B1. They say use called kiosk to provide a service.
Yeah, I know.
Go to a B1 in a residential district, maybe we should just go to special use.
What was, what was?
Either one would work.
The B3 is for the water supply line, that, there's a line for water supply, which is what they're doing. They're tapping into a water supply, and it's, it's a B3 use. I, I know what you're saying, and I kind of, you know, kind of agree with the chart is, is what it is. We also have to look at the, the jump, but B3 is what it's.
A water supply, then go to a special use permit.
That's a two-inch line?
Water supply facility public.
This is not a, I mean, this is.
Maybe you can do a one-inch.
It's a kiosk.
They need probably, with the pressure is in there, you probably need a one-inch line to supply this thing. Yeah, you need a better one. A one-inch line is what you would need, that's it? No? You don't need a large one. A one-inch line is all that you would need and some of that.
I'd like to get with building on that one, but if, if you'd like to table the item, we should get together.
Before it gets tabled, the conditional use permit stipulation or the submitted criteria, it does say that when they are zoned R1, they can only seek conditional use for up to a B1. So this is a B3, that they wouldn't be able to seek.
That's right. I mean, any applicant can ask for his own, but unfortunately, you're exactly right, and that's why I brought up the B1, because you can only move up one classification from the residential.
But I have to see if the building department maybe just zoned it wrong. Would I went to talk to them to, to do that?
Maybe because they didn't know what they were going to understand.
I think, yeah, there's, there seems to be a lot of, I guess.
We got to see what it means, water supply, what, what they're.
A water supply line is usually a two-inch line or better. I mean, it has to sustain a certain pressure, and it might even be a four-inch line. No, no, that's too much. I think, I think.
Do you want to connect the size line?
No, no, but what I'm saying is, here's the admission of a water supply line is usually.
No, no, but what I'm saying is here's the condition of a water supply line is usually about a four-inch line.
Existing?
Yeah. It's usually a four-inch line or better. Water supply. I think it is a one-inch line. I think a one-inch line is a. That's it. Okay, do you, would, you want to table it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion to table, we have a motion, we have a second, and a second. All motion in favor, signify by same eye.
Eye.
Those against? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, yes.
All right, next item, public here, consideration of the following preliminary plots. Uh, preliminary consideration of replat of lots 1 and 2, west 33 feet of block 3, block 9, 36, eastern division of the lots 1A and 2A, block 9, 36, six position, the tennis residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is Maria Cadena, Idoana Guerrero. Engineer of record is general engineering and surveying. Proposed use is single family residential. The zoning for this two-lot development is R1 and we did send out 12 letters. We received one for and one against.
I'm sorry, you got how many, four and against?
One and one.
One and one?
Yes, sir. The general location, approximately 0.4 acres located north of Clark Boulevard and south of Oakain Street. Aerial view. Street view. As you can see, uh, by the photo, the, the home, the home was destroyed in a fire. Actually, the home is no longer there, it's been removed. And this is the proposed plat going from three lots to two. Comments from planning and water utilities. Water utilities and utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
Okay. Do you have the engineer of record on here? Is he here? Guerra?
Unfortunately, the engineer sent an email to Lago saying he was not gonna be able to make it, but it was in favor of his top comments.
Sorry, the colleagues?
Yes, sir.
Is the applicant here?
Hello, I'm Nancy Cadena. I am the sister of the owner, property owner. She couldn't be here, but she wanted me to help her and express approval for, for this change. Any questions? I've never been to one of these meetings, so I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, what are the wishes, the commission?
I'm going to approve.
Motion and a second, all motion in favor, signify by same eye.
Eye.
Eye. Those against? Motion carries. Next item is, um. It's a review consideration of the following master plans. First one that we have is a review of the revision of the Killam Industrial Park master plan. The intent is industrial, the purpose of the revision is to reconfigure phases and streets.
Properties Limited. The engineer of record is Seca Engineering. The proposed use is industrial and the zoning for this 158 lot development is M1. General location, approximately 1,200 acres located north of FM 3464 and east of FM 1472. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed master plan, or master plan revision. Comments from planning. Traffic safety. Additional comments on traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
Uh, Ralph, can you go back to the, um, to your master plan?
Yes, sir.
All right, now, the, the, the purpose of this revision is to configure some phases and streets. Can you tell me which ones?
Yes, sir. We can see from here, the reconfiguration is happening here actually on unit 21.
Okay.
Up here. And the initial reconfiguration of this street, uh, actually used to connect to Killam Industrial and it no longer does. So that's one of the comments from staff. But it's a reconfiguration of this two-lot lot development, proposing.
So I said.
That'll come up as in the future of your, your package.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay. Does anybody in the commission have any questions on this particular item? In that, what are the wishes, the commission? Yes, sir, Mr. Seca, come on up. I didn't see you back there, I'm sorry.
Hi, good evening, uh, Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Will Seca, Seca Engineering. Uh, and with me is Dr. Ron Ortiz with Columbia Development. We concur with, uh, most of the comments.
All right.
Except for the ones, uh, one and two from the traffic department. Because I think those two comments should be addressed as the, at the building permitting process, uh, process instead of a master plan. I don't think those comments belong to a, to a master plan application or. So I want those to extract. As far as the rest, we're okay. We're already, um, number six, we already met with the planning department and explained the, quite the, uh, the, uh, changes. And also we're gonna be providing a, a connection from that, uh, street that you were discussing a while ago. We're gonna punch it back to I-35, because that would be circulation.
Yes, you have circulation.
Yeah, we're gonna punch it back.
Okay. It works.
Okay, and item five, we don't.
Item five on which?
On traffic. Uh, we don't understand what, what they're trying to.
Let me see what's.
Label, one back, one back.
All right, here we go. Provide a description of how traffic switch.
Changes.
I don't know what to say, man. It, uh, seems kinda squirrely to me, too.
So one, two, and five should be.
Okay. All right. Everything else is good with it?
Yes.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Seca? From the commission? All right, what are the wishes, the commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion, we have a second. Now, on the approval, on the motion, commissioner. Remove one, two.
One, two, and five. See, and then remove one, two, and five comments.
There you go.
I'll second that motion.
And there's a second, others in favor?
All right.
Those against? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is the consideration of the following preliminary plots and preliminary replats. Item 9 is the preliminary consideration of the plot of Miguel Anthony Goldi's Lot 1, Block 1, in tennis commercial.
Mr. Chairman, you should have some correspondence in front of you to table the item.
I was gonna, I was gonna tell you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we want to table it?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so we have sent the table?
We have several of them.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
And a second, others in favor?
All right.
Those against? Uh, tabled. Now, I think we have.
C.
C, D, item D. Preliminary consideration of the plot of Lot 1, Block 1, Killam Industrial Park, Unit 21. The intent is industrial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Killam Development Limited, Killam Ranch Properties Limited. The engineer of record is Seca Engineering, LLC. The proposed use is industrial and the zoning for this one lot development is M1. Approximately 34 acres located west of Frontage Road and north of Killam Industrial Boulevard. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning and water utilities. Water utilities and utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
All right.
Uh, once again, Will Seca, Seca Engineering, uh, we don't have any issues with any other comments.
All right. All right, what are the wishes, the commission?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, motion and we have a second, others in favor, signify by same eye.
Eye.
Those against? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, preliminary consider, uh, item C, what do we have on C?
C, D, and E are the ones that we have here.
Uh, might be able to make, but he's in a, in accordance with preliminary comment. Okay. Item C, preliminary consideration of the plot of Carrier Drive Right Away Dedication Plaid. The intent is of course dedication of right away.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Better Court, India Char Trust. Engineer of record is Quadsense Engineering. The proposed use is dedication of right away and the zoning for this development is M1. General location, 3.26 acres located north of Laredo, in North Laredo, intersection with Carrier Drive Interstate 35. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. The comments from planning, water utilities, and traffic safety. Utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
Uh, Ralph, can you go back to the plot?
Yes, sir.
All right, um. Going from Northway Lane. Why are we, uh, what, what, what is the purpose of this rededication right away?
It's, it's part of the, one of the sections for their master plan here. They do wanna connect, uh, to 35, so it's just the, the dedication.
So dedicating the property to?
Are we? Yes.
To the city area?
Yes, sir.
For the city to build it?
And the city's gonna build it?
The city to build it?
No.
No. So why is the dedication coming right now then?
They want to plot the strip, but it, but they'll, they'll be responsible for building it, not the city.
One by parking lot?
Okay.
That makes sense.
This, there's, um, they still have, they still have to work. We've talked to Techstock and Techstock has design changes they wanna make on this? And they're asked for a meeting with the engineer. So we, that's why the, the engineer said he concurs with the comments. But as far as Techstock's concerned, they called us, they're gonna be making changes. So it might, it.
They're gonna make changes, they might even make changes to the alignment.
The alignment should stay, what they're, what they were talking to us about is they didn't wanna put any more stress on the bridge.
Yeah.
Okay, so what they were talking about is a right-in, right-out situation, right there. So if the, if trucks were gonna come out, they would go right, go south, take the U-turn to go north. But they wanna try to eliminate any more traffic going on Carrier Bridge because of the, the traffic on the east coming. It's very, it's, it's packed with cars. So they're looking on trying to do that. So the, the connection's still there, but not for a crossover.
I, I get it. I just don't understand why we're accepting a dedication of this right-of-way life, without the street being built.
So they're gonna plant the street by itself?
And dedicate.
And, and do they provide a letter of credit for the, uh.
Improvements.
Improvements.
As far as we know, they were gonna go, go forward. Well, but right now, if, if the city takes this, then it becomes a city responsibility to build. Well, you're, do you have anything in writing that convinced you that they're doing this?
As far as we know.
Yeah, cause there's a, there's a, there's.
There's what?
It's their, it's theirs to build.
I'm sorry?
It's theirs to build, they have, they're, they'll build it.
There is a.
Well, they, they are responsible for the building of the, of the roadway.
Do you have something in writing?
In writing from them specifically, no.
Well, because you're accepting, once the city accepted right-of-way, that's a city project. Yeah, that takes the developer out of the payment. So what's, so when you. What assurances do you guys have in place? I'm sure that, you know, everything is fine and dandy, but things can change, you know, with that, you know, in business, things can change just like that. And once you take the right-of-way, it was supposed, it belongs to the city, you build it. So what concurrences, if any? I don't think you guys have any right now. So my question to you is, why is this on for this dedication of right-of-way?
So they, they're wanting to, to connect, uh, Carrier's Drive.
I understand that, but I'm saying to you, why is it here now if, why do they, I mean, they can build the street, West Techstock Designs, it tells them what they want, and then dedicate the street with all the improvements to the city as opposed to right now? I, I don't get it. That, that's my, my personal opinion.
So, so do you have something that, uh.
We don't have any documentation.
Maybe that's the.
Yeah.
So why would he want to independently do the right-of-way dedication as a plat? With, without doing anything else?
We would need the engineer here to explain it.
In that case.
Can we table?
I'd table. Uh, motion to table, second? Others in favor, signify by same eye.
Eye.
Those against? Motion carries, tabled. Makes sense. All right, the next item is item D, and that is preliminary consideration of the plot of lots 2 and 3, block 1, Milwaukee subdivision, the intent is residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Jose Em Aguilar. The engineer of record is tech engineers and consultants. The resident, the proposed use is residential and the zoning for this two lot, two lot development is not applicable, and it is outside the city limits but within the ETJ. Approximately 0.3 acres located south of State Highway 59 and west of Milwaukee Road. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. The comments from planning and water utilities. Additional comments from water utilities and utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
Ralph, shoot back to the plat, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay, how much right-of-way are you all requesting?
Uh, we would be requesting the 50 feet here.
The 50 feet?
Right. And now the, the county would also have to concur with the 50 feet as well.
In addition to what's existing?
No, no, no. Well, he's identifying that it's 50, we just wanna make sure that it is the 50. That if there's anything that's being left out, he needs to prove that it, that it will be included, so it's 50 foot wide on that street.
Okay, but how, how wide is Milwaukee Road right now? I thought that was a 50, but it's not, it's like 35 feet, I found it mistaken. What is the width? It's about 35 feet, right?
Right.
Is that what you remember? So then the dedication would be like 15 feet, not 50.
Right, well, he's. Yes, sir.
So why is this, what is this, a preliminary?
It's a preliminary.
Okay, well, that's. It's like, you know, let me just put the whole thing in there and figure it out later type stuff, that's not. I don't know. Okay. Anybody have any questions on this? I know I have a, an email here from the engineer that he concurs with all the comments.
It'll get me.
I mean, it's preliminary, so he's gonna have to come back with the actual measurements of what the right-of-way dedication is. I can see the lots are clearly what he's doing, but he still needs to figure out how much he needs to give. Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any questions on that? No? Uh, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve, submit to the comments.
Uh, motion, we have a second. For the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. All right, the next one is preliminary consideration of plot of Lucas and Sue, unit six, in tennis commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is ALS Laredo Holdings, LLC. The engineer of record is Dirksen Engineering, Kenneth R. Dirksen, DE. The proposed use is commercial and the zoning for this one-lot development is B one. One point oh acres, located north of Lomasitzwood Boulevard and east of Vehido Avenue. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning and water utilities. Additional comments from water utilities and traffic safety. Utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
We do have a comment from the engineer that he is in concurrence with the comments. Any questions from the commission members on this particular item? Relax. What are the wishes?
I propose motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor? Signify by same eye, and those against? Motion carries. Next item. Reconsideration of the following preliminary plots and preliminary replats. Preliminary consideration of plot of UISD, Juan Valera Ramirez Middle School, in tennis institutional.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is United Independent School District. The engineer of record is civil engineering consultants. The proposed use is institutional and the zoning for this one-lot development is AJ. General location, approximately thirty-two point eighty-six acres, located west of FM fourteen seventy-two and north of the World Trade Bridge. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning and traffic safety. And comments from utility coordination. Proposed motion.
Okay, yes, sir.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the, the commission staff, Andres Rui with Civil Engineering Consultants. We concur with the comments.
Okay, thank you. Now, what, uh, this, this school is about forty, fifty percent already done, right?
Right now, they're, I know they're clearing the site, but that's, um, a site civil.
They're just clearing the site right now?
Yes, they just.
This is at a K- subdivision? Yeah, this is the one, okay. All right, so you, you're clearing the comments?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the engineer? All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second. And a second, all those in favor, signify by same eye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Next item. Consideration of the following final plots and final replats. I think we can probably take all of these together. You guys want to make a motion to take eleven and twelve together?
I move to, uh, combine eleven and twelve.
We have a motion, we have a second, and we have a second, all those. All those in favor, signify by same eye.
Aye.
All right, we have a motion for approval. I saw move, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, signify by same eye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Anything else, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, planning director?
No, sir, um, just want to wish everybody, uh, safe, because he faces a tiara. You're not touched.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, the second, all those in favor, thank you. All right, all those. All right. Yes, he says, I said.